I'd like to have a Johnson County Board Education Special Meeting for January 28th, 2016. First item of the business is item two, discussion approved, discussion and approval of closure of Mead Memorial School. Is there a motion to do so? Motion's been made in second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion from the board? If there be no discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the public forum, reasons and explanations for closure of Mead Memorial.
Yeah, I'd like to kind of, kind of you all, the background things. I explained this to all the staff and teachers over at Mead Memorial last night and the press conference, I thought it served to know these information things first. They work in that building every day, they involve our kids and our students, our community every day. Also, on that last night, after I talked to them, I sent a message out to all parents, then finding out best in short little sequence what was going to happen. And I can tell you, yesterday morning when I got up, I had no vision in my mind as this scenario was going down the street. On Tuesday, staff and me had alerted Mr. Rollins and his staff, there were some roof leaks over at Central Elementary. Mr. Rollins and his staff went over there to view it, see what repairs and things that we can make doing it. We looked at it, we saw it has leaked. We have leaks in buildings all the time. We thought we could do some things about it. One thing he didn't notice also that it was running down between the outside wall, you know, Mead has plaster walls on the inside. It ran down between those two things, which is something we had not seen, I had personally not seen before, and plaster had peeled off in a couple of places. Based on that, I knew I had a meeting scheduled for our new facility plan to start on Wednesday morning, Mr. Rollins and our architect. And I said, will you ask our architect if he can stay a few minutes longer on Wednesday morning and accompany us over to Mead and see what we can do about that? We got here yesterday morning, we talked about some of those things, he said, if you don't care, I'd like for you all to ask Mr. Duke Bolkup, the architect engineer, go over there and look at that with Mr. Rollins, we're gonna click over here and do that. At that time, we went to Mead to view what was happening. And again, architect looked at things, well, we're talking about things, we opened ceilings up, put ceiling tiles out, some of them fell down, but didn't have to take them out because of rain and things, things from the roof on there. They started looking at roof choice. And again, we have pictures here, we have pictures that you're welcome to look in, we have pictures embedded in this. And following their inspection, in fact, Mr. Bolkup really went through the building twice yesterday looking at that, those things. Cause of that, they made some suggestions to that. Now, this is, again, a quote from, go back to the previous page, Charles, this is the last page. Again, we did that, the water was completely plastered on, and architect evaluated the building, okay, go one more time. And again, we requested duty to come this over there, follow the inspection, both the architect and engineer found significant damage to ceiling choice and structure of the building. What I mean, found holes in ceiling choice, extensive rust on ceiling choice, where they fall on, they set on the beam over here, and I'm not an engineer or carpenter or anything along with where they set, they saw where they'd rusted off, they wouldn't even set it on the beams in some places. Everything we do in Johnson County Schools, as you can go from last week or so, we want to add school. That's because we're looking at for the safety of our students. Based on the professionals looking at that, due to deterioration in system and roof structure, architect engineer deemed the school unsafe or unsafe by students and staff. Once they told me that, I felt that I had no choice. I'm not gonna put a child at risk for it's my child, or your child, or anybody else's child in that. If I asked this question yesterday, would you think anything will happen to it? There's no hundred percent guarantee in anything. One of the comments back to me was, yeah, it could last another ten years, they could follow in here in ten minutes. I mean, that makes it a no brainer to me. Just me personally, it may feel different about that. Now, this is just, one of the things, duty and roll in his report and letter to me, the loss of strength in the roof choice and air strength appears primarily to be at the choice ends. Again, ends what we're talking about, working next to the walls over here, sits on the walls. Failure of choice ends would result in a complete disconnect from necessary bearing wall. In addition, the corrosion of bearing plate will increase the bearing pressure being applied to the bearing wall, which could possibly exceed the bearing limits of the wall. Failures of this nature could be catastrophic and occur without warning. You know, the last few weeks, you've watched TV, last week and ten days, you've seen even a local marina fall in out here because of snow and things on the roof. You've seen numerous buildings across State of Kentucky, you've seen other mariners on Lake Pendleton and other places fall in. Nobody anticipated any of those things, I can guarantee you that. This is just some examples of that. We've got pictures here, more pictures here, Charles, other examples. Just in fact, associated with that, Mead Memorial was officially classified as transitional school in the early nineties, by the Department of Education on their facility plan due to the school being in a hundred year flood plain. Basically, what that means, we cannot do any major renovations to that building because of that. Everything we do to that building is paid for out of local money. And we have done numerous things down through the years, especially in the last couple of years, on my super tenancy here. I think you, if you're sitting over there, if your teacher over there, you know, we're putting new restrooms in and things for you. We did carpet in your rooms and things this year, we did carpet. One of the things we did back was tile back in the kitchen for our cooks back there, it was in terrible shape. I mean, I can't fix everything at one time, but we can use our local money, try to make it, develop the best we can do and save for our students as we go forward. That's what we're trying to do. That's what we're talking about, we can go along and do any major renovations. And over the past twenty years, Johnson County School District and me staff who worked diligently, there's not have been a cleaner building in this district, and you can credit Stephen Amand to that and the staff over there for those things, because I know how hard they've worked in doing that, what pride they have in that school and that community, as many of you all, as community members and parents and things over there. We can't tell when a major weather event is gonna happen. We didn't know it was gonna be eighteen, twenty inches of snow. We didn't know that the roof was in that. I had no reason to go look up in the ceiling until Tuesday, when I was notified of that.
But in 2008, y'all was lumped out, that was, wasn't that back in 2008, the issue of the closing of the school?
Not to my knowledge. I can't speak, I wasn't on that 2008. I mean, back as early as ninety-four, I can tell you it was named a traditional, transitional school, it was again in 2008 also. Basically, I think most of that is again because it was in a hundred year flood plain, and you can't make major renovations or build a new building in a flood plain. I would have thought if they would have noticed something along that line, we'd have done something way before then. I can't answer that. That's just my feeling, as we tried, as I said, and we've tried to do, you know, small renovations as we went down through the years here.
But I thought in 2008, that was the main concern, is the roof.
I can't, I won't answer that question.
I can. I worked there for thirty years and every, I turned in every week when there was a leak from the roof, they should have came over and fixed it. They'd come when it wasn't raining, they couldn't find the leak.
We have big man, and we've been over there numerous times and worked on it. In fact, this year, I also had a project built after we worked on the roof that catches back there where it's leaking on the gymnasium, I don't really know that or not. Where it becomes basketball, it's currently no longer leaking there, as my understanding. Grant, you correct me if I'm wrong here, 'cause I am.
It no longer leaks there.
We've tried to make, and as we always do, when they recognize there's leaks in those buildings, we go and try to repair and work on those. That's all I can say about, again, the only reason why I'm doing this is the safety of our students. I'm trying to make this move as smooth and transparent and with the less disruption I possibly can on the surface factors. I'm trying to put currently, Mead Memorial in Central Elementary. It will be Mead school at Central Elementary, even though it's a different building.
How long? I mean, how long will they go with that?
We don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that.
Who does then? Who knows the answer to what our mistake of our children are? I thought that's what this board was for.
It is, ma'am. Again, one of the things we're looking at, and as I told the teachers actually going forward, we are in the beginning process of starting a district facility plan. In other words, reviewing all our schools, what's our plan going forward? I think our plan going forward is looking at, can we build a new school of Mead? I think it's gonna be on our agenda, that's why I told the staff there yesterday, in looking at that.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Since our kids are having to move to Central Elementary, we're paying Johnson County taxes, our taxes are not, are going for all the other county schools, but it didn't go for ours, does that mean we're gonna have to pay city taxes now that our kids are coming to Central Elementary? Since it's been part of something there?
Your taxes you pay are based upon where you live. If you, I mean, if you live in City Hospital, you pay twice the, what, hard to forty-five cents here in Johnson County, you pay ninety-two something, it's ninety-two point eight over Central, if I'm not mistaken. I couldn't be saying that wrong off the top of my head. You know, our, our tax rate is, one of the lowest tax rates in the state of Kentucky. I mean, we're in a hundred seventy-three school districts, I think, we're, what, a hundred and sixty something.
Wasn't that girl, board member, you said that if you break the five cents, that nobody can do nothing about it? Wasn't that the paper?
No. I don't, I'm pretty sure I've seen that, yeah.
My question is, don't you think it's too far for these kids that's in Hammond and White House, to go every day, five days a week? That's what we're talking about. That's what we're talking about with school kids. You got five picture of kids.
Ma'am, let me ask.
Four-year-old, mine's four.
I understand that lady.
She'll be on the bus at least one hour twice a day. I don't see how that's conducive to learn.
Which used to be, old friend, when that school went back, it was no problem. Buy the property, build the school. What's wrong with me? You gotta remember, holler that there's no money for Mead schools. Those kids deserve a school in their area.
And we're sacred in academics.
We understand all those things. You're a distinguished school, these are things I've told the Department of Education, things along that, you have a great school, you've got a great staff, you've got a great teachers, you've got a great community, but I can't make these things happen overnight.
No, but you've got board members out here that run and dollar, we're gonna do everything we can to save Mead school, we're gonna fix Mead school. None of them happen.
Well, ma'am, they had no intention.
They never had any intention. They had intentions on shutting it down for forever.
It's been going on ever since thirty years.
And our kids that don't have a plan, that's what they're talking about.
But, we're moving them because of that.
And I understand that for safety. If they're later here, that's fine, but it ought to be.
I can't promise you it won't be two years, it won't be three years if you're really building.
Well, I'm out of here. Buy the property for Highland, buy the piece of property for Mead.
Well, that's something we have to look at, we're going our local facility plan forward in doing those things.
They're bad or they're homeschool while it is.
If it's homeschool, they will never build another Mead. We need to keep our kids, we need to keep a Mead school. Find a piece of property.
They're property, right there beside it. BLM, it's a big lot right there.
There, there are a lot of things going into personal property and guidelines you have to meet, there are certain acreages you have to meet mandated to get that. I think it's about twelve, fifteen acres for elementary school, and I'm picking off the top of my head, and that may be true. It's gotta be on the flood plain, and all of those things, it's gotta be associated with it. Nobody can own mineral rights on that property, the school board has to own all the mineral rights and the property and things, there's a lot of things that goes into that. Again, we had no intention, it ain't thirty yesterday morning, to know we was gonna have to go to Mead Memorial School, but I've gotta take the advice, what I consider our professionals for the safety of our students, to do that. And we've gotta look good going forward, what can we do for that school and that community?
I understand that, and I'm a hundred percent for that. I want my children safe, but also feel like babies deserve a school in that community.
And as I said, you've got members sent on a local facility committee, I think, Ms. Sager, or Andrew is here or not, that guy, she's there, Mr. Dahl sent, and I can tell you, they're gonna fight for those things. We talked about those things yesterday, the staff.
But I think everyone's concerned today with what is the future.
We're, we're gonna do that, we just told you that.
These are our children, and they're gonna be displaced, and then they're gonna be bused hours. We're not talking a few extra minutes.
Well, you're talking, you're talking the distance from, from Mead Memorial to Central Elementary, you're talking six.
No, you're not. You're talking from my house. You're talking from my house.
They have a second run bus at the end. And he gets home thirteen minutes later than right here.
But, but still in the same aspect, what's it take to get from Central Elementary to, back to Mead where you can start that run? Ten minutes? I'd rather have any, uh, ten minutes.
No, it's already been, you're gonna send a bus over to Mahl Hill doing fifty-five miles an hour? I don't think so.
Let me ask, our presentation, our child, about that, just for a second. Look, the morning, the AM run will not change. Your kids will ride the same bus, same driver, that will not change. The only difference is that instead of the bus stopping at Mead, dropping off the students, they will drop them off at Central.
So they'll have to run earlier.
No, no, nothing will change. Time, yes, that is correct, because if you'll notice, at Mead, we were getting there about ten after seven, fifteen after seven, actually, that's a little bit early, we should have gotten there a little bit later than that. They would get to Central at about seven-thirty. And typically, most schools, they, the students arrive at the elementary schools, so about seven-thirty, somewhere seven-twenty-five, seven-thirty. So, will not be any changes in the AM, other than we, whatever bus, if Stephanie, children, your children, Milstrel High School, will drop them off at Mead, at Central Elementary, the Mead part, and we'll take the Milstrel High School onto the Milstrel High School. Nothing will change. Afternoon, I'll be honest with you, I think it's gonna be better. Now, I know some of you thinking, well, that, that's not correct. We've added, I met with the drivers this morning, and got their input, we have added an extra bus over there. So, we're gonna, I think we'll get the majority of the kids home a little bit quicker. I truly believe that, because we added one extra bus. So hopefully, they will not be on, on the bus two hours and all that stuff. It will not happen. I promise you that, it will not happen.
But once they go from, from the run, it's not like they're going straight from Mead out to Central. The bus still has to run to each individual person to pick up their children.
Well, we're doing that also today.
Okay, and then when, when you get out to Mead, then you still have to go all the way out to Central.
That's correct.
So that's adding at least twenty minutes. If there's no stops, if there's no stops between Mead and Central.
There will be no stops.
That's at least twenty minutes, okay? So our kids in the morning, our kids in the morning will be on the bus for an hour.
I'll be honest with you, I mean, I know it sounds like an hour's a long time, but I can assure you, there is, there is places at, at, from Highland, going to Little Mine Fort, Pigeons, and those places, at Ford Elementary, going up to Head of Sidney Warren, those kids are not the only kids that's on there for an hour.
You mean to tell me you think it's okay for a four-year-old or a five-year-old on a bus, before they ever get to school, to try to learn anything? For an hour? That's exhausting.
Well, I, I understand that, but it'd be nice if we could get every kid home in thirty minutes, but we know that's not, that's not possible. When, I mean, you know that's not possible, because we would have to add ten to fifteen more buses and all that, so that, that's not, if, an hour is not unreasonable. It really isn't.
What about the money that's gonna be spent, for them buses moving, you know, the fuel?
It's basically, basically, it's gonna, it's gonna bounce out. There won't be a whole lot of, a whole lot of difference as far as, we have to travel that distance anyway. The only added money that we would have was about three buses that, we only, we normally only had three buses coming from Mead to the Milstrel High School to bring those kids over. Now we have five, we have two extra ones. So other than that.
So you're saying the time that they get on the bus in the morning is not gonna change?
Will not change. Will not. That will not change. And we ask you to be patient with us, ask us, if you've got a question about, you think it's too long or something, tell us now, we, we'll try to work these things out. I mean, we don't have the magic wand, we can reach out there and make every answer we want right now, but we're willing to see where we can go as we go forward. And I would tell you, the drivers this morning, and most of the drivers who live in your community, or, they used to, I don't know if we've got some of them, but they all agree that what we worked out this morning is, is pretty good. It really is. So, if, if there is a problem, let us know, and we'll try to work with you on it.
Uh, one more question.
Go ahead.
Was the structural maintenance that was.
That's, I'm the buses, I'm the.
Was the structural maintenance that was, that was found, was that pre-existing, or was that something that was caused from a storm or?
It was pre-existing, and the storm made it worse.
I can't answer that all.
It was ongoing for years.
I can't answer that. I don't know, I don't want that to be pre-existing. I didn't look at it until yesterday. I mean, rust don't appear overnight on some things, I'm gonna say that.
Well, my question is, is the county receiving emergency money for a disaster?
No, not currently, we are lying.
But why aren't, I mean, not the heavy insurance, like, is it a big school, just like we do on our houses, and how's that work?
Yes, we have insurance, things are, we're currently have not been down that road yet, with insurance, kind of, things a lot.
Well, I know, I just question, I mean, that leads to go back to our kids, you know.
Yeah, I have one back here.
Yes, sir.
All right, you said nineteen ninety-four there, whatever year it was, they, you can't do no major work on the school, so if that was then, that, I'm under the impression that we ain't gonna get into the school, or even intent, because look how the school was then, and that's been twenty-five years ago or longer. So, why wouldn't preparations made for a new school if you know you couldn't do any major work?
I mean, it wasn't gonna get better in twenty years, you know what I'm saying? If it was there in ninety-four, something should have been going on, you know, to prepare for our kids, a new school, because Highland's got one, you know, Central Elementary's got a decent school, but, you know, I figure that next Flat Gap's gonna have to go into Highland's for some reason. All these small schools are just vanishing, and I left my kids at Mead because of the small community. We all know each other personally.
We all understand that. And I think if you were out some of the other schools, if you were out Flat Gap, I'm back at Flat Gap, I grew up at Flat Gap, what school, I think you see that same type of trend out of Flat Gap. I also spent eighteen years at Porter, and I can say my West Van Lier and Van Lier community was also family and thanks to me, and very dear and supported that school at that point in time, and thanks also.
Mr. Sager, may I please, you can. I was a member of, of that community, I've been raised with you all and among you all. I feel your pain just like you do, I've got two children that this is the face. With that said, our school is simply a building. The thing that made us special is you and our community. And I'm not gonna do this because I've been there, and I'm not, but you can take the people in our building and put us anywhere, and we're gonna have that community, because that's who we are.
That's exactly right.
We were raised together, intertwined one. So, you know, I, I don't know what's gonna happen next year, I can't answer what's gonna happen with myself or any of my staff in the future, other than we will all be employed, I've been promised that. But it does not matter where they put us, we are what makes the school a building.
We should have.
And we are, we would not have been kept together had it not been for Mr. Sager and their board. I know we get so many different things said sometimes from so many different people, that it's hard to justify what's right and what's wrong. I believe in Mr. Sager, and I believe in our board, and I believe in all the men in central office and all the women. You know, I've been raised in this, in this system, and if they tell me that we'll be on the agenda to ask for, what more can we ask for? I mean, you know, to me, there's, there's nothing else we can ask other than them to give us the chance at having, you know, what the state does.
Without replacing the roof?
The state has to approve that, and they won't approve major innovation.
Because of our classification. But you got to remember, guys, your kids and our school is what we are because of us, and because the feelings that we all feel right now. You know, I've been in school with you, Dwayne, and Tabby, Amanda and Steve, Miss Dornet, and they, I, I, that's all I've known is that area and those people. I am what I am, the positive experiences that I've had within that community and with you all, growing up.
What timeframe are we looking at to find out if we get a new school?
I would say sometime this, this two thousand sixteen year, it's about a six, eight month process of doing this, and we just, I mean, first thing, yesterday, kind of looked at some of the preliminary stuff, we, and it's, you know, we go out and they have media schools, invite, they have public forums, just like this, to come in and invite the public and things, talk about what they want in their schools, what they want in their community. It's comprised of, twenty people are on this committee, four of them are administrators in here, principals, one of them, we're saying, we've got four teachers, Andrew is one of them, we've got community people, advertisements is running the paper about two months ago, they're asking anybody that wants to be on the Johnson County Schools, a local planning committee, you could, you could send a letter in and apply and do those type of things, people were chosen to do that for the community. We've got myself, Mr. Hutchinson, Mr. Crumb, here in central office, and we all comprise, comprise this group, we all just have one vote in, I mean, it's a group.
So, when the new school year starts, we have an understanding that there is gonna be a Mead, even though the building planning is still two, three years ahead, and we can still stay Mead under Central's roof? Or are we looking in August, splitting those children up, so many to Central, so many to WR?
I can't currently answer that question for you, just to be honest with you.
Will we know before the end of this school year?
We would, should know before the end of this school year, and those are questions and things, I probably don't get to get to answering that I want, so, but it may not, I have to run that up the ladder, so to speak.
Two, two families, Central and Mead, cannot live in a house divided, it just isn't possible.
No, it's not. I don't, I don't, I don't see that.
A house divided with all.
Well, again, it comes, it comes back to the people in that house, I think, of what they do with those kids and the people making communities, make that group successful.
Oh, I, I agree with you.
If we go in with a negative attitude to begin with, we're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be successful. I mean, we've gotta make this as positive we can for our kids, that's the reason we're talking about doing, about how we're doing this, trying to put, I want to see who's room your child's in, Miss Ramy or Miss Hayden's room is, I want you to be able to walk in, your child walk into Robin's room, make it need, see the other eighteen, nineteen, twenty kids, whatever, how many else in there, and Miss Hayden stand up in front of that room, make that stability and that, what I'm gonna call continuity, the best we possibly can at this time.
I, I agree, our attitude is gonna reflect on our children from Monday morning, and I want it to be as positive as I can for my child, but I need to make an educated decision on their future. And if Mead is gonna crumble and fall because of whatever decision this board makes, I need to know whether I can leave my child in Central, or whether I need to pull them to WR, wherever I think they're gonna get the better education and interaction.
No, we'll rotate our kids, they meet school, because that's our home. Meet school is their home.
Mead is not the building, Mead is the spirit in the building.
Meads people there, I mean, whether it's a new building or it's old building.
But right now, their future depends on what you all decide. So, I mean, we, we really need to be kept informed and in the loop, if it's, if it's letters sent home.
That's what I'm trying to do, and that's what I tried to do at the phone calls last night, ma'am, as soon as I knew these things, and, and. That's what I tried to do, and that's what I tried to do with the phone calls last night, man, as soon as I knew these things, and got my last consoler back with our architect, our engineer, our board attorney, and again, talking to our board members here.
Why was this meeting, uh, called three thirty when most people got to work? I mean, why did it even five o'clock?
Six o'clock.
I, I mean, I'd say probably fifty percent.
Well, I will tell you, I will tell you this, sometimes we just have to call me, and we get, when I get these people here, and we can do things, my door is always open to anyone in this community.
Y'all took it down at five o'clock, or when everybody got off work, that's what I wanna make sure.
Well, there are some laws and things, there are notice and things, we could have done that, maybe we could have had it later, I mean, I'll have a claim for that, that's what it happens to be, sir.
I just didn't, you know, I just didn't understand why it was over nine, you know, most cases.
We wanna try to get this information out as quick as possible, I, I've had people that's worked all night, last night, trying to work, about one o'clock myself, trying to be at Central Mead, trying to do those things. And I can't, and I can't compliment, the number, the number of compliments I've had today, from my staff, it's been acceptable to me, what these ladies and gentlemen have done at both of those schools. And it's, and it's an inconvenience for Central Elementary too, of what all these people have done today, to make this a positive thing going forward, I can't compliment them enough in doing that.
But is it too much to ask for, since you're making decisions for our family, to not post it on Facebook and in the papers before we are notified?
It wasn't in the papers.
It wasn't in the papers, nobody was notified, Facebook was.
It was on Facebook Herald.
And it's on Facebook Herald.
That's simply because you have to give a twenty-four hour notice of the meeting, and Facebook Herald chose to post that, that wasn't, they weren't asked to.
I can't control what somebody else does out here.
But by law, you have to send us a notification, there's gonna be a meeting.
Not entities, I got no control over that. I mean, my obligation was to leave memorial staff, and that's just my opinion, my obligation was to print, and then his staff would let him know this. And then my obligation, as soon as I let them know, the best possible can, I personally made a phone, I worked, you should have got a phone call yesterday afternoon discussing this, talking about this. If you didn't, you probably need to check with, uh, we go back to school on Monday, check with Burla, or Connie, let's check to see what your phone number is, we've probably got something, this is pulled from our student database system. There's probably not a box or something checked, and we'll be glad to go back and figure, you can call here, Tom Cochrane, or Jeree here at the office, they can go and fix that for you. And that have, phone numbers, things change all the time, we do that on the daily basis, we're changing numbers, that's, that's not a problem. Or sometimes, you're usually called, there's a box not checked somewhere, and they said, call that, but we'll be glad to fix all that, we do that all the time.
So my understanding is, Mead is still Mead under Central's roof, at least for the remainder of this year. And by the end of this year, you're gonna let us know what August.
I would hope, I hope I can let you know before. My goal is by the end of school, I hope to let you know that I'm changed. But I, I want to sit down.
We have one before.
Again, that's just a dumb example of miscommunication and things like that, and going forward, we're looking at that, we've been talking about some things today, of trying to make more room. Again, I ask you to be patient with us, we may, we may even have to move, we've been talking about moving something out of Central Elementary to another spot, to give us some more room and things. Mead, Central Elementary, uh, I think its capacity is about five hundred and twenty-five students, and will be about five oh seven or eight or something going in. So, it's not asset capacity, based on the.
Is, is the state's regulations now, as it was back in, what she was talking about, two thousand and eight, four square feet per child? That's all they allow you to build, and with your enrollment that you have at Mead right now, you're just looking at three thousand square foot that the state would approve.
That's, I know they used to be strict on us. They, they still are, that's why we're getting some of our guidelines for students at, I know for a classroom that's eight hundred square feet, I think at one time, probably, it is went up from one time from about six fifty to seven hundred, and now it is eight hundred. And what timeframe that happened to change then, I don't, I don't know. Yeah. With that, but I do know as of yesterday, it was eight hundred square feet per classroom, that's, that's a regular, just a regular first grade, or second grade, or sixth grade classroom.
Well, what is the possibility that they could get mobile units for these children before their school is built, so we could be in our community? Because when, when sports come around, there's no way that Mead basketball and Central basketball can practice and share the same gym and get equal amounts of time.
I agree with that. I, I, I don't know that, I don't know that mobile units will be the answer to that, that's just me saying that, the board may disagree with that.
I want that part, I mean.
It has been done at various places, across the district and things, and doing that, one thing, the state grounds are mobile units anymore. There's been controversy right now in Fayette County, because overcrowding in the school, last, this, probably this coming school year, and they wanna put some mobile units, so they use overcrowding. But parents don't want to, but one thing, there's always the safety factor, and I'll speak from that, when I supported Elementary, every door in my building, we were pods, opened it outside. So, I mean, again, with the mobile unit, you've got that same.
It's not ideal, but neither is sending them to Central either, for full time. So, I mean, just, just.
Again, now, we're trying, the best I can tell you, is make the best out of that situation right now, I'm being honest with you.
I got a question. How did Flat Gap?
Uh, what?
A little older than us.
No, your gyms are about the same time, but they're both WPA buildings, the rest of the building was, uh, built in, for the lunchroom, the kitchen here was built in nineteen sixty-two, there was addition about eighty-eight, eighty-nine.
But you're putting renovation in on them?
Yeah, but they're not in the hundred year floodplain, so they're not a transitional school.
They were flooded here once.
They were not in the hundred year floodplain. Flat Gap school did not get flooded. Flat Gap Community got flooded, up and down one seventy-two, and Catherine Street, and Jones Street, and things, had no water there. And again, I talked about the hundred year floodplain, I mean, there was water in Flat Gap through for all my life, there was water, and I've been there some years old, and I've never seen in those places before, and never would have dreamed that a flash flood could have, could have caused that, I mean.
That's been happening.
As you say, man, that could happen, we read about that, we read about that every day in the paper, on the news, in those places.
But they're putting big renovations in on them, but let us know.
But the thing is, the state determines whether it's a transitional school, we don't determine that.
Again, again, going forward, we're getting ready to do our local facility planning committee, develop a new plan for the district, we can look, our goal is to put a new Mead school on that plan.
And that's what we want, we want our kids back home in a new Mead school. We don't want them stuck over here in the city with everybody else, we want them right back where they work, so our taxes don't go up, so our insurance don't go up. That's what depends on our amateurs, our far department, and everything, is having our school in our district. And you can have any insurance agent that you go through.
Having a school district has nothing to do with fire problems.
It does.
I'm not gonna argue, but, uh, that has, that has nothing to do with that. Other questions, comments, concerns? No, ma'am, no, ma'am. Uh, we've been advised, I mean, the state has advised us, again, we're very carefully with our, all the people, we can allow in, building at one time, these liability factors would be a school employee, if we have insurance on that school employee, it's a false error. As you said, we would not have insurance on them, we would be allowed, and stuff, after the fight.
You wouldn't wanna compromise anything, like, so, it's.
I have a question. Um, obviously, our children, basically, are big concern, and I don't have a bit, probably killing my child out of the nonprofit. We're putting them in Central, so they're just in it for everybody, um, my concern is, are we fighting to keep them in Central for the next year, or are we not pulling them out of there, and sending them, you know, everywhere where they want us to send them, or where we can send them, or help them? Until it results whether they're gonna build Mead or not build a new Mead, are we gonna fight to keep them in Central, and have a Central Mead, or what are we gonna do there?
I mean, it was never discussed, after you went over, and you found out, that these kids, there's no way, that they should be in the building. It was never discussed that, oh, guys, you know, we're gonna have to do something after the next couple of months with these children, what are we gonna do? Never discussed that.
We're, we're just trying to get through day by day right now, I can, I can tell you that, I mean. We're looking at what we do, what we can do in the immediate for our kids, we're trying, we're not looking at two or three months down the road, or even, a month down the road right now, we're trying to, what can we do here in the, in the immediate timeframe? For our, for those students to be more, for that staff to be more.
Right, but you can, you can understand our concern, that we've got these little children, okay? And that we don't want to disrupt everything for them right now, and then turn around and offer, and say, guess what, you don't have a place to go, so we're gonna disrupt you yet again.
I mean, I don't think that we would have been in this situation had some, somebody, whoever that may be, years ago, would have just kept their eyes open and checked these older schools. Instead of worrying about building the bigger ones.
Right here, they seen it, they seen it.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, people knew about this, but the people that needed to do something about it, didn't do something about it, obviously.
Should have paid for that.
So, I mean, where does that lie?
Million dollar sports facility right over here.
Uh, yeah, we helped pay for that, because.
We're only gonna listen to one at a time, I can be glad to listen to all that, and we're not gonna yell, and talk to each other, kinda thing. We have, what I feel are some of the greatest facilities here in Johnson County Schools, we do have, we do have a multi-million dollar football facility, baseball facility, softball facilities, as well as gymnastics and things. Again, those are things that our communities, and things that I asked for in previous local facility plans, and things along, along those lines, and that's the reason they came about, they were in the facility plan previously, and doing those things. And, uh, our, our buildings and grounds are the enviable of a lot of other districts, and that's the reason we're so successful in many, in many things we do in Johnson County Schools. And it's because of our teachers and our community that we are successful in academics, and athletics, and clubs, and organizations that we have here in Johnson County Schools.
I'm not, I'm not downing the sport, I love it, I mean, my son here is in sports in Johnson County, that's my same. Maybe we should check on a few things to make sure.
That's my point, absolutely.
This could have been prevented, prevented by.
I mean, not prevented like two months ago, like, twenty years ago, preventing.
I went to that school in the third grade, I'm almost forty, and I, I don't see a thing different of.
But, the thing to remember though, is to, to do something like a major roof project like at Flat Gap, it would require state approval, which they will not grant, because it's a transitional school, so all you could do is paint and just general maintenance.
What about the tax money?
When you don't get our tax money, you say that's for everybody else. I think the building is.
I think you're wrong in that, Amanda.
Only oil springs and meat works.
I looked at some of that data, and I think it's perfect this year. If I'm not mistaken, fifteen thousand dollars over there on renovations in Mead, I looked at last year, and I thought it was twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand dollars. I looked at the year before that, it was ninety-three thousand dollars, we have spent money.
We also, the money that the cash has been on our building, but we know the things that have been done, that's needed done, and it didn't get done, and then it wouldn't, after that family, that it got put there, for the, reported.
Well, you're sitting here wanting to blame somebody, and I'm not gonna go in there, to be honest.
Well, I think that.
We've done what we've possibly been, keep that building going down to, it's gonna go down to history.
I think the mentality is, twenty-two years ago, it became a transitional school. Twenty-two years ago, the people in charge should have made provisions then to plan for a new property and new building, instead of waiting for it to be ready to collapse and fall in on our children. Twenty-two years ago, I was a freshman in high school, so, I mean, it goes, it goes back before you, but nonetheless, twenty-two years, it's been a traditional, a transitional school. And nobody has made the effort to look forward, and it is too bad.
I think they have made some efforts, things in the past, especially when they've come in the past, and looked at their local facility planning.
You know, the, what the money you have been in, cause what we're saying is, the roof, that was the main concern all along, that shouldn't be on top of our world.
And we understand that because of the money, the floodplain, we can't throw that money in, but twenty-two years ago, somebody should have made the initiative to, okay, it's not getting better, we need to look ahead at, at property, and at getting a building plan in place. Instead of putting it over on your shoulders twenty-two years later.
Here's all of my shoulder, so I'm gonna have to deal with it, and all I can say, I'm trying to do what I know now, and what I can do going forward, I can't go back, and I, I can't go back to fixed things in the past. And I'm just trying to be as honest with you and tell you what I'm trying to do going forward.
Guys, I think the main thing is, you've got an outstanding group of teachers at Mead, and I, I get to go in each school, and you've got some amazing, amazing teachers, and amazing culture. And this board and this superintendent made sure that your students get to go to their same teacher, and are gonna get to have some continuity, and took some pains to do that, and all this has been done in twenty-four hours. So, I mean, I, I think that's a, I mean, that's something to be commended, for, for the timeframe that we're under.
I, I think what we need to do is, all of us come together, I mean, I ain't been on Mead for three years, believe me, I love it, I love everyone you got. But listen, we need to come together and, and ensure our kids that it is gonna be fine.
About three years from now.
To help this staff, well, I mean, three years is later down the road, right now, right now, we, we need to ensure our kids that it is gonna be fine, they got the same teacher. And my, my head's off, it says, well, elementary, off the door, I mean.
This time, and all this stuff, these kids wanna be so huge, they don't know what they're gonna do.
Well, that's where, as parents, we need to be internal, that it is gonna be.
They're gonna go with it, it's twenty thousand, that's all the world, they gotta make a run for it.
Exactly, if the community does, does, don't, stay together, it's done, I mean.
But what we have to do is, and we can grow stuff.
Right now, that's our, our, we're here, leaving them all, what we want.
Sure, a lot of kids went back.
Well, I'm just saying, or you promise that, you don't know that, I don't know that.
But, time will back you.
All, all we can go on right now is that Mr. Sager and the board has told us that he's gonna present before the state can touch the building.
So that's the only thing we're gonna go with.
And that is, and that, but I'm on, I'm on, I will fight, I promise you, I'm a member of that community, I grew up there.
There's nobody that's ready to fight.
It's gonna go down to somebody at the state.
I think we've always worked back, red, uh, back and forth for that.
We all classes be ready Monday.
That's our plan. I mean, if we have to work, I mean, we've already worked on it, I had to send two, oh, oh, because they hadn't, they'd been up since six o'clock in the morning.
I would, I would honestly be comfortable if you would hold off Tuesday, let us have an open house Monday, so we can have a feel of where kids are gonna be. I don't like this in my child, lying in this place.
What if it was possible to have an open house Sunday afternoon? I mean, I, I don't know that right now, and to be honest with you, I mean, we get into this, start packing, we may have to say, yeah, we're gonna close school Monday in Johnson County, we can play a game. I don't, I don't know that, I can't, it's our goal right now, is have it ready on that. But, I mean, I don't, you know, I can't make, I'm.
I, I would just feel comfortable seeing where my child goes, before I just blindly throw them in.
I totally agree with that, ma'am, I, I don't think we would have a problem doing that. that, sprinting Sunday afternoon, we'd, we'd see that not work, we'd get a message, y'all go out on Sunday to saying, you know, we're not where we thought we were gonna be at this point, we are not gonna have school until Tuesday, and, and, and then, again, we may have to take it back, we don't want to go to this corner, P, next, at this time of year either.
But yet, you could open an open house.
I think, I think it's a great idea, I mean, I mean, I don't know what time, like work logistics and that out, so it's big here later, maybe four to six, or five to seven, or, I mean, three to four, three to six, I don't know, what's gonna work on those things, the printing that's going on, about having an open house and things, maybe on Sunday afternoon, let's see whether the teachers write the things.
We can do that, any minute, after church service and before church service.
Because the whole lot of my staff are, are very, very godly people, and I'm.
Well, what the board did, uh, very godly when it comes to the place.
All I know, will MEAD, will MEAD, what, what would be an efficient time for, for you to MEAD?
Uh, if it's on Sunday, you know, like I said, evening Black Gap, maybe two to five.
Two to five, I'll be there two to five, that's no issue, if that's okay with you. I'm fine with that, I can be there with you, I know I can do whatever you just say, that's no issue.
You probably need to post a message.
We're all, we're all there midnight last night, surely it's.
We will have our guests, when you buzz in to the main office, you're coming in, the way that guys.
Are we still gonna buzz in through Berla and?
Yes, ma'am.
See, that, that would, that would ease so many minds.
Missy Gunn has done everything possible, along with the board, to make this as smooth as it could be, because ultimately, it's not about what, it's about making sure that our kids are still gonna get a quality education, and be, be familiar with what they're getting. When you buzz in, you're gonna see Connie and Berla, next to Connie and Berla, you're gonna see me and Missy, I mean, we're right.
What about lunch schedule, I mean, can, can, can people hear us?
I'll be honest with you, right now, the lunch schedule is, is not being at the top of my list, I'm more concerned with making sure I get our teachers in their room, they have the materials that they need, to where when we open Monday, quality instruction is permanent for kids, just like it always is, in a familiar area that's set.
Right, uh, what about, uh, all our kids, like stuff that's in the lockers and?
We went through, they've been bagged, they've been labeled, when we get there, guys, Monday, it's gonna be, it's gonna be our first day at school for all of us, you're gonna have to be patient, you're gonna have to be compassionate, and you're gonna have to work with it, because it's gonna be, be physical.
Are, are you open to, uh, parent volunteers to help get things organized outside of the classroom, such as locker?
They don't have lockers.
They've had some tabbies and things, they're working on those things, man, those are things that we're gonna have to work on, as, as we go forward here, I can assure you.
The children need to work on education, would they be open to do parent volunteers to help them in other aspects, as, I know, I know we can't walk into MEAD, but we can be at Central.
I would, I would assume Brent will let you do whatever we all did in MEAD, coordinate that.
We, we are, we are MEAD in Central, we're taking our people, our community, and we're moving our people and our community to that area of that building that is ours.
Yes, sir, I'm, I was just asking if you would need parent volunteers either this weekend or come Monday mornings?
That's up to you.
I have no, I mean, if my, if there's anything anybody can do, like, you talk to your teacher, and she wants her, I'm fine with that, I'm gonna do that.
They can't come into the school building.
No, no, you can't come into our, into MEAD.
I'm talking about helping at Central, help getting it working.
If your, if your classroom teacher likes your health, that's fine by me, that's something that a teacher will have to sign. That's something you've always done, at MEAD or whatever, Central, Black Gap.
Which is part of what MEAD does, we, we help each other, so, I mean.
That's why we're a family, all the time.
And that's why all the other schools are, are families, thank you.
More than willing to give up a few hours here and there to help get things straightened out at Central, so Monday's not so crazy.
Any other questions or anything? Again, I appreciate everyone coming out here this evening, if you've got questions, feel free to contact me, my staff, Mr. Dawes, we hear what happens to me, we'll try, we'll try to answer those questions.
Thank you all for coming out.
If you call here the next few days, the next day, we'll talk you into Central MEAD one. Phone number is going with me, it'll be fifty-fifty, uh, forty-nine, fifty-nine, just like if you call, Gar, Garla or Connie, I've worked on that for days myself. Great. Good to see you.